Good afternoon, everyone. This is the August 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals. I just want to start the meeting saying if anybody has a cellphone or any kind of gadget that makes a noise, please shut it off. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending provisions of the open meeting law till March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is conducted in person and via remote means. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided far in the order. A reminder that persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 855161878, or join the meeting via the link on the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast of Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. We start the meeting with a roll call of all board members to authorize this form of meeting, starting with Mr. Veatch.
David H. Veatch, and I authorize this form of meeting.
Ed Acton, I authorize this meeting.
David S. Nixon, I authorize.
Paul C. Semple, I authorize this meeting.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Steve Moore, I approve.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
And Randy Pardash, I approve as well. We ask of any citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone only, give their last four digits of their number for identification purposes. We conduct the meeting as follows. The hearing notice is read by staff. To my right is Sarah Clark. Then you, your representative, will present your application. Anyone in favor will have an opportunity to speak with a five-minute limitation, and there will be a timer up on the board over there, so please be mindful of that, and if you're not, I'll remind you. Anyone in favor of the appeal may speak, as I said, for five minutes. Then I will summarize all letters received by the board. Anyone against the appeal or application, or if you have a specific question, you'll have the opportunity to do that. Also, with that five-minute limitation, the applicant can then rebut any testimony and anything that's in those letters the applicant will have a chance to address. The board members may direct questions to anyone present. We hear further information, close the public hearing, deliberate, and usually we vote on the application or appeal. All votes are taken by roll call. At the end of the meeting, we close via verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. Our members are all here today. There's eight of us voting today. Will be regular member Dave Veatch, Dave Nixon, Paul Semple, Virginia Fenwick, and myself, but we all deliberate on every application, and everybody's information is just important as the next. With that, we have minutes from July 25, 2024. Paul?
Yes, I'll move to approve the minutes as published for July 25, 2024.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. Okay, so our first application today is 24-086-433-MainStreetLLC.
Application number 24-086-433-MainStreetLLC, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 433 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessors' Map, 15D Block TIB Lot RON. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change two non-conforming dwellings in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwellings located at 427 and 435 Main Street and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing structure located at 427 Main Street is non-conforming, and that it is set back two feet from the southerly of butter and four feet from the easterly of butter, where five feet is required. The existing dwelling located at 435 Main Street is non-conforming, and that it is set back three feet from the southerly of butter and three feet from the westerly of butter, where five feet is required. The proposed dwelling will comply with the bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw. The existing lot coverage is 8,926 square feet, 76.7%, and the proposed lot coverage is 8,624 square feet, 74.1%, where 90% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 11,638 square feet in the GB1 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5 via the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley, Attorney Riley, welcome.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of 433 Main Street LLC. This is a commercial zone, GB1, so we have currently, in the rear of the main building, two cottages that have been used for residential purposes. The goal here is to remove both of those existing cottages and replace them with a single cottage. That has the beneficial effect, for the Odell's in particular, who are here today, they're our neighbors to the east, that a building that is only a couple of feet away from their property line will be gone. It's going to create a sense of openness, not only for the Odell's, but also for the residents in the residential condos on the second floor of the main building. If you've been to the property, you know that our immediate of butter, within a couple of feet really of our, where our building is, here on the west side, is the driveway into, I don't even know what they call anymore, it used to be Christians, it was a wonderful place to visit. And so it's a heavily commercialized area. The, you know, they're creating a road drain in the middle of the property, so the drainage is going to be taken care of on this, with the increase in the asphalt. So it's, the building's set back, it's an attractive design, so I think that what I should do is just do a quick run-through of the criteria and then answer any questions you might have. So adequacy of the size of the site, in terms of the size of the proposed use. So the proposal is to remove two existing cottages and replace them with a single cottage. That will result in a small reduction in building coverage of 145 square feet. The new cottage is no closer to the property lines than the existing cottage, and the removal of the cottage, which was previously adjacent to the eastern property line, will add a sense of openness and demonstrates that the size of the lot is adequate for the project. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. I did not do the usual analysis we have comparing gross-floor areas, because the buildings around us are all so different. You know, like the building in front of us, 425 and 433, consists of two commercial spaces on the first floor and three units on the second floor. So the gross-floor area of that building is like five times the gross-floor area of this building. The Odell Building, principal building, which, by the way, used to be Bill Toby's Law Office, the gentleman I went into practice with many years ago, is moderate in size, but on the other side, we have the old Christians Restaurant, which is now a furniture store, I think. Buildings across the street, again, they're all commercial in nature and significantly larger than our cottage. So, but I believe that, given the multiplicity of small cottages and buildings behind the front row of the buildings on Main Street, we really are very much compatible in this Extended the proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure or use. There is a small increase in the living area, even though we're removing one of the cottages. The new cottage has two full floors and a cellar, so our gross-floor area is 2,408 square feet, but the footprint of the building is only 821 square feet. Because there's a slight increase in the living area, that constitutes a slight increase in the non-conforming nature of the property. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties around the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. As you know, it's already developed, including an asphalt parking lot, which is going to be increased in size, so I don't think there's going to be any negative impact on the neighboring properties due to stormwater runoff, principally because the parking lot, once it's repaved, is going to have a storm drain to a leach pit that'll take care of all the stormwater runoff on the property. Impact of scale, size, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Because the building is at the very rear of the property, it doesn't have much of a presence on Main Street. The design is still a traditional design, larger but very similar to the cottages being removed. The, we don't block anybody's views and visitors, as they say, we don't think there's any impact on the streetscape. The, I think that you could determine that this change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. Compatibility of the neighboring uses, so in Chatham, under our bylaw, residential uses are allowed in the GB1 zone, and there were quite a few here, in addition to the commercial uses. So we think that the, having a single-family cottage in this location is compatible with neighboring uses. The properties on municipal sewer and municipal water, and the drainage is designed so that the drainage from the building goes into the catch basin under the driveway, the parking We don't believe there's any impact on traffic flow and safety, or no increase in noise and litter. Adequacies of utilities and other public service are adequate. That'd be our presentation.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I have three carve respondences to read from internal agencies. First one is from about the planning board. They have not received an application for this property as of yet, and that was from Annie Hayes on August 22, 2024, and that's the status of that. The health agent writes to us on 8/20/2024 that she received the plan to demolish and rebuild one three-bedroom dwelling at this property, and the dwellings are currently connected to municipal sewer, so no additional sewer flow is proposed. I have no concerns about the proposal. Then we have a note from HBDC, from Chantel Kilkeny. She tells us on August 1 that the members of the HBDC met on June 5, 2024, and they rendered a 5-0 unanimously approving the demolition of the dwelling at 435. Any changes will have to go through them, and that's that, with standard conditions. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Steve?
I have no questions, but was there anything from the HBDC concerning the structure of 427, which is also being demolished?
So they did come before HBDC for the demo rebuild of 435, as well as the demolition of 427. All of those were approved.
Okay, thank you.
That it?
Yep.
Steve? Okay. Jenny?
Mr. Riley, three bedrooms in the proposed single unit building. What's the current bedroom count in the two, the two current?
I think they're four.
Total of four. Okay, thank you.
And Lee?
No questions.
Well?
Did prior versions, which were approved, provide for two separate residential dwellings?
Yeah, prior applications left the two buildings in place or rebuilt them, so this is a, this is a change from prior applications.
Right. I'm just trying to get a feel, are we eliminating a residential building?
Yes. Yeah, there are two cottages currently used as residences. So the cottage on the east side is going to be removed, and the cottage on the west side is going to be removed and rebuilt as a three-bedroom cottage, and, you know, in the same location, although it is larger than the existing cottage.
When you say a three-bedroom cottage, you mean a house, a residence?
Yes, it's small, so I call it a cottage because it's small, but yeah, it's going to be a single-family residence.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Dave Nixon?
Is, is this correct to assume it's workforce housing? I ask that because per bedroom, and what I've seen, workforce housing tends to be at least two beds per bedroom, so I'm looking at six people living in this, if it's going to be workforce housing.
The, I haven't discussed that aspect with my client. The, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that our sewage regulations and our septic system regulations all assume that there are two people per bedroom, but I honestly don't know. I haven't spoken with Mr. Rennick. I think the, of hand, based on my experience working with Mr. Rennick on workforce housing, there's not, there are not enough beds in this house to make the construction of the house and use for workforce housing economical, so I think it's unlikely.
Okay. My big concern about this is what happens to the current folks that occupy all the space in the front building. When construction starts, there's going to be all kinds of noise and, you know, you got to rip down two houses, you got to dig a big hole for a new foundation, cement trucks and all that kind of stuff. What plans does your client have for the displacement of all those automobiles that currently use all that? Have you made a deal, for instance, with the Odell's, that they will accept for a small fee vehicles on their property, or what have you done?
Again, I have not discussed that with my client. I assume that the, we have a new municipal parking lot down the street, the work's going to take place in the wintertime, so tourists aren't going to be that big a problem. The former Christians has two large parking areas on their property. Perhaps my client will deal with them as a place to offer his other, not even his tenants, they own a condominium there, so, but there are, I think there are plenty of opportunities for places to park for them in the wintertime.
So, so construction would start, say, in January, is that what you're saying?
I have no idea when it's going to start. He's been approved here twice before and never started anything.
I understand. This could be different, right?
Well, it could be.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, I just, I wish you knew some of these answers, but you don't. Well, thank you.
Okay. Ed, questions?
Yeah, I guess, why are you proposing to tear down two structures and only build one, I guess? I see the town's struggling for housing, especially affordable housing, and there's two structures here, and this seems to be a part of town where it could certainly handle the density. Quite honestly, I'd prefer to see two structures back there and perhaps, you know, continue to have the housing that the town, you know, needs.
Well, the, both structures are in, I would say, difficult condition, particularly the one closest to the Odell's, the one that's being removed. Ramshackle comes to mind as a way to describe it. So I think that was the primary motivating factor.
Okay, thank you.
And David Veatch?
I have no questions.
No questions? I noticed the people living in both of those structures, so I'm just wondering, can you confirm that? There's, it looks like young people that maybe were, I don't know for a fact, but the ones I saw were young, and they were all hanging out there and living there, apparently.
Yeah, well, they're currently rented.
Yeah, so it's sort of rentals now?
Well, there's always been rentals.
And do you think it will be a rental if it's a brand-new house?
I have no idea.
You have no idea? Okay, fair enough.
I mean, you know, it costs a lot of money to build even a small house, so the, you know, right now, the buildings are in difficult condition. Young people who are there for summertime don't seem to mind those kind of things. They put up with them better.
Yeah.
But the, you know, this is going to be a very attractive, you know, three-bedroom house. Well, I honestly don't know if it's going to be a standard residential rental.
Yeah.
I'm almost certain it's not going to be workforce, because there's simply not enough beds, given the cost of the construction, to justify it.
Yeah, well, all right, thank you. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, deliberations. Ed?
Well, I'd prefer that the applicant rebuild both structures and have two structures back there and provide more housing in an area where, you know, it's zoned for something like that. I don't, I would be supportive if there was an increase in bedrooms even back there and there was two structures, but I know, I certainly do know the cost of construction is expensive, but if you had, if you were allowing an increase in bedrooms and could build two structures with three bedrooms each, I think the town would benefit from something like that. So it would have my vote if you were to come back with a plan like that.
Okay. Dave Nixon, deliberations?
Well, I think it's a great improvement for the neighborhood, certainly the Odell's. And to answer your question about the occupants of that first building, I think there are four occupants in there now. I could be wrong, but as Mr. Riley said, they're, they're folks who work in town. I do have those concerns about what's happening during the construction phase, but I have to take Mr. Riley's word that the folks who are there now will be taken care of, one way or the other, and so I'll be voting for it.
And David Veatch, deliberations?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement mostly with Dave Nixon. I mean, I think it does represent an improvement. The loss of workforce housing is a concern, but I don't, I think overall, losing one structure back there is appropriate in many respects, and putting the, you know, making this one a little bit larger. So I think it works for the site and works for the property owner, who also is very much concerned and has provided a lot in the way of workforce housing in different locations, so. So I'm not so concerned about that. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay. Jenny?
Yeah, I agree with, with Dave and Dave. It's an improvement. You know, it is disappointing to lose a bedroom when we are, as a town, suffering from housing bedrooms, but I, I do think it's an improvement to the site and it meets our criteria. I would support it.
And Steve?
Yeah, I would support this also. You know, we don't know if there were two structures back there, if it would all be rentals or not. And, you know, I, I think this is an improvement to what's there now, and it should make that whole area a little bit nicer, so I would support it.
And Lee?
Yeah, I agree. It's a very attractive house. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental. But in some respects, I agree with Ed, too. I mean, we could use some, we could use some more of these little houses, but that's, you know, not my decision to make. It's not my property. So I'm not voting today, but I would have supported.
And Paul?
Well, I, I preferred the prior plans that provided for two structures. And I guess, before I would support it, I would like to hear more about why that doesn't make sense, given that, I'm not sure that we need another larger house in that area as much as we need perhaps two smaller ones, assuming that that works. And it would have worked if it had gone forward. So I think unless I hear more along those lines, more of the, of the view of Ed act, and we're dealing with a general business zone, you can have housing in a general business zone, but it's not something that's particularly encouraged. And in general, we want to keep it a business zone. So I would be reluctant to support a larger, single-family home as opposed to a continuation of, of two, two buildings.
So I'm not saying I'm not going to vote for it, so don't get nervous. But I agree with Paul, and I agree with Ed, and I don't think that's really an ideal spot for a one-family house. It's awkward. It doesn't really belong there, in my mind, but we're stuck with the ultimate question, will doing that be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood? I can't say that it would be. I don't think what's there now is very attractive, but this, this landowner, this, you know, developer, he has the right to do what he wants to do, as long as it's not substantially detrimental. And so I would have to say I would support it, but I'm not a fan of it. And, and as we already know, maybe it won't even happen. Who knows? And maybe that'll be back out rented next year, and the saga will continue. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. We would need some conditions, given the nature of the property and all the activity that's there. Do you have any objection to our standard conditions?
No.
All right. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles will either be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Now, I think Dave was expressing some concern about any of that activity being on-site in terms of construction activity and vehicles, but it seems to me that needs to be in there. And then secondly, between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Jenny?
Jenny votes yes.
Well?
I will vote no, given that it seems to me this is a general business zone, and we should be encouraging not single-family homes if we can keep several buildings going.
And I will reluctantly vote yes. And that's that.
Well, just for whatever it's worth, you know, I'm meeting with Mr. Rennick tomorrow. He's buying another property, which he plans to use for workforce housing in a, in a, in a GB zone. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you. All right. Moving along to 159 Seepine Road, application 24-087. Whenever Sarah's ready, she will read that application.
Application number 24-087, Michael Baldwin and Elizabeth Baldwin, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 159 Seepine Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 11K Block 35, Lot HC13. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 22 feet from the Westerly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District floodplain elevation 12. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and it will be located entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the expansion of the existing driveway as allowed by special permit. The existing building coverage is 2,561 square feet, 68.5 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 2,800 square feet, 74.8 percent, or 15 percent, but not more than 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot, the lot is non-conforming in that it contains 3,741 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 34,255 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D, 2B of the protective bylaw.
Attorney Litchfield, welcome. Welcome, Ms. Kempton.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicants, Betty Ann and Michael Baldwin, who are in the rear, under the clock. And with me is Karen Kempton, with whom you are familiar, who designed the plans for the house that the Baldwins propose to construct out at Harbor Cove. With us also is David Clark, our engineer. And the reason, of course, that we had David here, other than the fact that we like him, is that, as you know, this is a challenging lot. It is significantly impacted by the floodplain. It is, in its size, typical of Harbor Cove, it's actually relatively large. It's 30, just under 35,000 square feet, but it has a paucity of buildable upland. So the Baldwins, who have a lengthy history with Chatham and family members here, purchased this property four years ago, with the knowledge that they wanted to do something, and what that they wanted to do would be constrained by our bylaw. Obviously, the Conservation Commission would be involved, as would this board. And with the assistance of David Clark and also Teresa Sprague of Blue Flax Engineering, and of course Karen, we have done something which we think you can find ultimately is appropriate for the site and is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So before I go into the criteria, Madam Chairman, if I may, I'd like to ask Karen to talk about the house plans.
Sure.
And then I'll go forward with the other aspects.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Kempton, architect for Mike and Betty Ann Baldwin. When the Baldwins approached me earlier this year, the decision had been made to demolish the existing house and build new. They had initially considered doing a renovation, but based on the cost of the changes that they wanted to do, and that the house was in the floodplain, the floodplain standards would affect the renovation, so therefore it made more financial sense to build new and to construct it per floodplain standards. So to build new, we had to elevate the first floor out of the flood zone and provide minimal crawl space with floodvents. This meant giving up the full basement of storage. We also knew that we had to be a maximum of 30 feet above the lowest adjacent grade, not 30 feet above the grade plane, but 30 feet above the lowest adjacent grade, which was at elevation 8.9. This meant that the ridge could only be one foot higher than the existing ridge, while the first floor had to be one foot higher than the existing floor and be out of the floodplain. So set with these parameters, we also knew we wanted the house to conform to the east and west side setbacks. On the west side, we pulled the house an additional 10 feet away from the existing footprint to open this side of the house up and provide views to Crow's Pond down through the driveway. Right now, the existing driveway ends at a garage where the garage doors are facing Seaview Street. Do you have the existing photo of the house? Great. So this, this is what you see when you come down the driveway, the two-car garage with a 16-foot garage door. So to, to remove the garage, we decided to do an L-shaped garage so that the doors were not facing Seaview Street, and this allowed the west side of the property to open up, which allowed views now down through the driveway to Crow's Pond beyond, which has a benefit for the neighborhood now that they can see Crow's Pond from Seaview along this property. We also knew that we had to pull the house back from the top of bank, and currently the house is 27 feet from the top of bank, and the proposed house will now be 40 feet from the top of bank. Not only does this benefit the natural environment, but it also opens up views east and west across the property for our butters. If you go back to the site plan, you can see that our abutter, I believe it's on, yeah, you can see the footprint on the east side, that now, because the house has been back, it has a more open view across the property line. The Baldwins also wanted a second-floor balcony, so if we can pull up the front elevation, they actually have, or the rear elevation, they actually have a balcony now across the full length of the rear of the house. So rather than build a covered porch, which protruded from the first floor, we placed the balcony above the living space on the first floor, rather than extend it further out towards the top of bank. Finally, Betty Ann and Mike like the style of the front-facing A-frame gables, which are prevalent in this neighborhood. I sent two this morning. One is the abutter to the east, a photo. That's the one to the west, again, with gables on the front, and that's their abutter to the east. Most especially, the abutters to the east and west having the A-frame gables. This added to the trend of, or the vernacular of the Seepine Gables, as Paul Hyma Savy De Silva has coined this phrase for this area. So we softened the look of the front gable by utilizing a porch roof detail with wide columns acting as cornerboards and recessing a front door entry. There are simple four-over-one windows with two windows in each front gable and three windows in each of the smaller front shed dormers. There is a proposed stone veneer base to hide the concrete foundation as the necessary height for floodplain construction and floodvents. So we hope you agree that this is an attractive addition to the neighborhood of Seepine Gables, as well as allowing neighborhood views to Crow's Pond down the driveway and beyond, and it also respects the natural environment by increasing the distance from the top of bank. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Karen. As to the criteria, and these are obviously those on which you make your decision, we start with adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks, like the entire neighborhood, which was developed originally 1950s. We have an undersized lot under current zoning, which today requires 40,000 square feet. And again, much of this lot is in the floodplain. At present, we have a small footprint, but it was adequate when built in 1951, although there are, under current zoning, sideline and top-of-coastal-bank setback nonconformities. As Karen has indicated, we're doing our best to eliminate or reduce that, and if you can find the site adequate for the new home. The footprint remains modest. It's consistent with, but smaller than others, and I'll get to that in another criteria momentarily. As Karen has indicated, we have necessarily but intentionally elevated the living space out of the floodplain, installing floodplains of floodvents and having the garage built on a slab rather than the existing, there is a present, a basement under the house. The building coverage increases, but only by 239 square feet, but the pervious coverage is reduced significantly, and I'll get to that again, get to that later again. As Karen has indicated, the sideline setback on the west is now met. We are further from the sideline on the easterly side, and we're moved back almost 14 feet from the top of the coastal bank. As to compatibility of size, the third sheet of the handout, I'll ask you to take a moment to look at it. Our lot has 34,000 square feet, larger than several others in the neighborhood. They range from 21,000 to 38,000. We're in the larger half, but our footprint is very small, at 2,561 square feet at present. We have the second smallest footprint in the neighborhood, and in terms of coverage, it's 7.5 percent of the entire lot, again, the lowest percentage of coverage. The gross floor area of the existing house is 4,695, and if you approve the special permit, as I hope that you will, it's being increased but only to 4,932 square feet. So the gross floor area is increasing by six or seven percent, not by much at all. Again, the living area at present is 3576. It's going to be increased to just over 4,000, but there are other houses in the neighborhood with living area of up to 5,000, 5,300, 5,500. So if you approve the special permit, you can do so based on the finding that we are compatible with the size of the neighborhood. The footprint increases, but it will be compatible with its surroundings. It's consistent as to gross floor area and living area, and still among the relatively, a relatively small house for the neighborhood. One number that may have come to your mind is the, the fact that our footprint will be 2,800 square feet. And there may be a thought, well, that's the maximum. We're maximizing the limit. Actually, the 2,800-square-foot limitation on coverage does not apply to this lot. We are under the 15 percent of buildable upland. It's, the rule is 15 percent, but in no case more than 2,800 square feet. So that's really almost a coincidence. We are, however, in terms of our buildable upland, we're already well above 15 percent. We're at 67 percent. The buildable upland is only about 3,700 square feet, so we're already above that, and the 2,800 square feet isn't really maximizing. It's just, it happens to be the same number that would be applicable in other circumstances, but that number does not apply to this lot. As to the extensive increase in nonconformity, we have several at present. We're located in the floodplain. We're nonconforming as to lot size. We're nonconforming as to the proximity of the top of the coastal bank and the sideline setback. There is no increase, really, in nonconformity, except for the footprint, and I'll touch on that again. The sideline setback deficiency is eliminated, and the house has moved 13 or 14 feet back from the top of the coastal bank. Yes, the footprint increases, but when we get to another criteria, we'll talk about the decrease in pervious coverage. As to suitability of site, the site has been developed for residential use since 1951. It has been reviewed initially by the Conservation Commission, which resulted, and the chair will read a letter later, resulted in a positive response to the overall plan, to the mitigation planting, and to the impervious surface reduction. As to scale, siting, mass, views and vistas, and effect on streetscape, the existing house is set back 165 feet from the street. It's without much impact on streetscape, but it does partially block views and vistas from across the street. It is sited on relatively high ground. The only other relatively high ground is right up at the street, and obviously you can't create a new conformity by building next to, or right on the street, on Seepine, because we have a 40-foot setback. As to scale, siting, mass, views and vistas, I start with three of my favorite words when dealing with Karen: not a gambrel. And that is by itself something for which I think we might have some degree of credit be given. It is still set far back on the lot. As Karen has indicated, it has two gable ends on the street, street side. It is, I think you can find, an attractive and thoughtful design. It will improve streetscape, as Karen has indicated, by opening up corridors, particularly on the west side, but also on the east side. And there is, as the chair will read later, significant neighborhood support for this proposal. As to compatibility of use, there's no change. It's residential use. Adequacy of Adequacy of water and sewer, town water, five-bedroom septic system. The septic tank is to be relocated, but otherwise no change. No impact on traffic flow and safety, noise, litter. All utilities are at presently located in the neighborhood. One obvious consideration under any proposal on a site like this is the extent of lateral expansion and resulting impact on pervious area. That is something that was added to our bylaw, I think about 10 years ago, when we changed the bylaw and eliminated the old 20-foot limitation on height, or height of houses in the flood zone, even though this one was already more than 20 feet, because of the need to elevate houses as we are doing here. But when that was done, there was a, a second part of it, not just a consideration of lateral expansion, as one of your criteria, which it should be, but there's, there's a conjunctive there, and the resulting impact on pervious area. In this particular case, we are starting right now with a footprint of 2,561 square feet. There is a 239-square-foot increase in, or a lateral expansion increase of the footprint, which is 9%. That is compensated by a net decrease of 2,863 square feet, a reduction in the paved driveway. All of the pavement, which is in the flood zone, is being eliminated, and it will be replaced with a pervious structure. The bylaw asks you to look at the resulting impact from the lateral expansion, and in this case, because of the other things that we're doing, it is a net positive. All of the driveways, as I've indicated, in the flood zone will become pervious, and with the additional mitigation further benefiting the site, there is a reduction in pervious area, which is larger than the house itself. We're getting rid of 2,863, 2,863 square feet of driveway and building a 2,800 square feet where there's already a house of 2,561 square feet. If you have questions on that, David Clark is here and will respond to them, and I don't want to go on too long. So having gone through the criteria, the question, as you know, is whether replacing the existing structure with a new house, moved back from the top of the coastal bank, and eliminating the sideline nonconformity with a modest and reasonable lateral expansion, which is compatible with neighboring properties and with the support of those residents, is substantially more detrimental than the existing structure nonconforming lot. It is, as I started by saying, a challenging lot. The petitioners and their design team worked for a lengthy period to develop plans, which, as Karen explained, provided some additional living area, but which were sensitive to the site, which addressed flood zone issues and were consistent with neighboring houses. Being aware of the bylaw's consideration of lateral expansion and impact on pervious areas, this was designed to minimize the former but to make a decidedly positive and significant impact on the latter. So in light of the criteria and the plans, I think you can find the proposed new home is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, but is instead an attractive and appropriate house, which is both responsive and sensitive to the demands of the site and an improvement. David, as I indicated, is certainly here to answer any questions you might have from an engineering perspective.
Thank you so much. I'm going to waive the rules and go to our building commissioner, because I know he has to leave at 4:00, in case he wanted to make any remarks on anything that was said. Would you like to do that?
The only one I, I may disagree with is I believe that 2,800 square feet of building coverage is the maximum allowed for this lot, because it's based on buildable upland, not lot, lot size in itself.
If I could, but our buildable upland is only 3,000.
Correct.
37. So it's, Sarah's, my guidance is it's 15%, but not more than 2,800.
Correct.
Well.
So you're over the 15%, but the 2,800 is the next stopping point.
I, I won't argue that. I, I think there may be a difference of interpretation, but we're, we're certainly, I think the...
Well, we'll get, we can get back and discuss it, but I just wanted him to have a chance to, to give his statement.
But we are at the 2,800, if that's the case.
Yes. Okay. All right. Very good. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make a no. Seeing none, I will read the correspondences. There are seven. First, we have a note from Catherine Halpern, the planning board chair. She tells us on August 20, 2024, that the planning board at their July 22 meeting reviewed the zoning board's request for comment on the above-referenced application to construct a driveway in the Conservancy District at 159 Seepine Road. After review, the board voted to send a positive approval that the driveway be constructed of permeable material and in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. It's apparently they voted unanimously, and I watched that meeting, so I will say that they know that some of the driveway is not in the flood zone and doesn't have to be permeable, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, next we have a note from Judith Giorgio. She tells us on 7/22/2022, it says 2020, but I'm sure that was a typo, 2024, "I have reviewed the proposed plan for this property. The proposed five-bedroom house will not add septic flow to the property. The house will encroach on the existing septic system. The site plan proposed to move the septic tank away from the new foundation. The septic permit must be obtained from the Health Division prior to approval of the building permit." And Judith Giorgio is a health agent. Next, we have a note from the Conservation Commission, and that was received on August 1. They say that they're going to review this property on 159 Seepine on August 7 and discuss any revisions needed. I believe they did do that, and they are going to see fit to approve it, based on what happens today. Okay. So next, we have a note from Douglas and Lynn Johnson from 208 Seepine Road in North Chatham. They approved the demolition and construction of the new nonconforming dwelling at 159 Seepine. They are sure the new dwelling will add positive, a positive addition to the Seepine Road and Harbor Cove's area. And that was received on, let's see, August 13, 2024. Next, we have a note from Bill Tratchell and Nancy Tratchell from August 18, 2024. They live on 159, no, well, they say they're abutters to the property at 159 Seepine Road, and they live at 187. They've, they say that the owners have shared the plans. It's tasteful, and they understand it's in keeping with the tenor of the neighborhood, and they want this letter to be read for those in attendance at the August 22 meeting of the zoning board, and they want their neighbors to know that they are in support. Next, we have a note from Kevin Marino. He says him, he and his wife Rita own a home at 149 Seepine in North Chatham and write in enthusiastic, enthusiastic support to the application from Michael and Elizabeth Baldwin, who reside next door to them. And they say they understand that the application will come before the zoning board on August 22, 2024. They say that the Baldwins graciously shared the details of the plan, and they explained all the architecture and the drawings of the proposed dwelling. They got a guided tour of the property itself. Based on all of that, they believe that it will enhance the aesthetic beauty of the neighborhood, and they urge the ZBA to approve the Baldwin's application. Lastly, we have a note from Elizabeth Holden at 196 Seepine Road. Her and her husband Henry write in support of the Baldwin's application for 159 Seepine. They've known the Baldwin's for 16 years. While they lived at 224 Seepine and now at 159, they've always had the best interest of the neighborhood in mind. Their plan to replace the existing dwelling house at 159 makes sense. This will allow them to increase their setback from the water. It's in no way detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, it would enhance the feel of our quintessential Cape Cod neighborhood. We urge your approval to the application." That concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Dave Nixon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Yeah, the, Bill, you brought up the subject of what, to us is criteria number 12. And I think Sarah has the notes from that particular town meeting, which occurred in May of 2016. And I'm going to ask her to read what it says, okay?
So this is from the annual town meeting, May 9, 2016, explanation of Article 31, which Peter Kukulas, the former chair of the planning board, says, "The purpose of this article is to amend language in the nonconforming lots, buildings, and uses sections to provide additional criteria to the special permit review process for flood hazard mitigation projects. When elevating a home, some degree of lateral expansion may be necessary to maintain livability and meet building code requirements. This article proposes to provide the ZBA with criteria to balance the need for lateral expansion with the proposed increase in pervious area on a site for those dwellings located in the floodplain that seeks a special permit to elevate."
Thank you. Before our building commissar leaves, is there anything about this that bothered you with this particular application in relation to what Sarah just read?
No, again, anytime something is maximized, I have concern that they may go over during the course of construction and would hate to get to the end, endpoint and find out that they need a variance or need to modify the construction in any way. So my only concern is with the building coverage. Yes, it's larger than what was there before. I don't look at it as a lateral expansion. It is an expansion of the footprint, therefore, building coverage, but those are my concerns.
Thank you. So, Mr. Litchfield, I think what Comrade Briggs just said is important to me, meaning the maxing out of the 2,800, and I heard your argument, but I, I tend to agree with him, that this is a max that we need to think about. So I hate to see you ask for 2,800 and then somehow come back because of a mistake or a misunderstanding or all the other excuses that we get around here. Is this something you can scale back?
Ed, if I could, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nixon, thank you. We are very much aware of, of the cornerboard issue, which I will call it. And I will talk with Karen, and I believe Rick Roy is our builder. I don't know if Rick, yeah, Rick is here. He is also aware of it. As you know, I think highly of this board, but I don't want to come back on this house. And we may talk about reducing, you know, this room by six inches and that room by six inches. That may be feasible. I don't mean to redesign the Baldwin's house on the fly, but so that we are decidedly below 2,800 square feet.
If you did that, that would satisfy my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Continue on with questions. Ed?
Yeah, so I'm interested in, you, you have a different interpretation of the bylaw. You, since you're over 15%, you feel that the 2,800 isn't a limitation anymore, that that can be exceeded as, as well?
The way it has always been interpreted, by my understanding, and not just by me, it is the lesser of 15% or 2,800 square feet. And we're already above the 1,500 square feet, but it's not a point worth, worth discussing, because we are at 28, ideally, we will be at 2,799 square feet, even though we're already well above the 15%.
Yeah, it was more for future discussion, I guess I was trying to clarify, but understood.
Okay, great. Questions?
Well, I'm just curious to follow up, because I was curious about this. So were the ads built to come back? Based on, I don't know, I guess we have slightly different interpretations here, and of course Jays would prevail, I would think. But under your thinking, just as a hypothetical, and it came back at 2,803, would that be leading us towards a variance or a modification of special permit?
Variance. I didn't mean to jump in, but that would be a variance.
Okay. I'm just curious about that. Okay. And then the, so another question I have is because the other number that jumped out at me was a height of 30 feet. And that's, I know it's above lowest Jason grade, but, you know, height also, that's the maximum. So I'm, I'm, as you know, we've, we generally caution people if they're at the maximum the possibilities of needing to come back by overshoot.
If I could answer that? When I do the actual construction runs, it's beyond CAD.
Yeah.
I've asked for the ridge elevation at the highest that we can get so that I know that I can drop it six or seven inches and still have a comfortable allotment of, of height.
Yeah, okay.
If I had asked for 37.9, I would be held to 37.9. So I'd rather go maximum, knowing that I'm going to pull it back.
Okay.
Same as the building coverage. Again, when I do the CAD plans and I do the cornerboards all the way around, I'll shave six inches off possibly here, four inches off there, so that again, I'll have maybe 10 square feet of playroom. But I want to ask for the maximum up front so that I can pull it back if I need to.
Okay, and so that, yeah.
There is a large circular RR to my left, and that is our builder.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not asking to chime in, but he is very cognizant of this. In fact, he's gone through this on Cove Hill six or eight years ago.
Yes.
And there's no desire to return on this house.
Well, I, yeah, I guess we just keep bringing it up and just to know, I mean, we know that these professionals have encountered it and have worked out ways to deal with it, but it continues to happen sometimes. And I'm not saying it, it sounds like Karen has it very much under, under control, so that's good. The only other thing, and this doesn't really affect, I don't have any problem with any of this, but I, I'm, I'm looking at the situation whereby you lost a basement floor but still ended up with an increase of gross floor area. Is that, I'm, I'm, my, I guess the way I'm, is that, is that because of an increase in second-floor gross floor area over the existing? I'm just curious. I would have thought gross floor area of a full basement, and now no basement. I'm, I'm surprised to see gross floor going.
Technically have a three-car garage now.
Okay.
The third bay being for storage or some storage that we've given up for the basement.
But there was a garage formerly as well, right?
Right, but this was.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, given that it's 240 square feet plus or minus of increased footprint.
Yep.
I was just curious how we got to.
Yeah, if, I'd be happy to give you the numbers if they of interest. The, the, the existing full basement is 717 square feet.
Yeah.
The finished first floor at present is 1,664, and the finished second floor at present is 1,572. There is also 340 square feet of finished attic at present.
Oh, okay.
So that, that's probably a big chunk of the difference number, because there's obviously no attic here.
Yeah, okay. Now, it, you know, I don't see that the numbers are out of, out of line for the neighborhood. I just thought, how do we, how does we, you know, we lose an entire floor? That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. Ginny, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. So I had similar question that Dave had, Ed had, and Dave each had. So I, I too, let me start with the gross floor area, since we were just talking about that. So the basement of 717 square feet, you take that out, and then you compare the proposed house to the existing minus the basement. You're almost 1,954, to be exact, additional square feet of the house above grade. That was sort of, is that, is that fair? So that's the ask?
I defer to Karen on the gross floor areas, the numbers, and living area numbers, because they are on her plan, so.
So the finished, the existing finished square footage, which doesn't include the basement, because it's not finished, is 3,576. The proposed finished is 4,056, and that's all, again, above the basement, which we don't have.
Okay. So you were talking finished area. I was looking at gross floor area. I mean, it's, it's in line. It's a little bit higher, the gross floor area. So where I was, was thinking also is, you know, So where I was, was thinking also is, you know, it's similar to what Dave Beach was just saying, that that's a pretty big increase in gross floor area for a house that's in a, you know, that really only has 9%, I mean, 89% in the floodplain, so really only 11% buildable upland. So I, too, am concerned, as Mr. Nixon said, about the 2,800 square feet. But as far as questions go, Mr. Litchfield, I also had the question you mentioned about criteria 12, which I think Mr. Briggs answered, but you also mentioned something about the impervious, the change of the driveway. And you mentioned the word "and," that was really, in criteria 12, there's A and B, and then there's the "and." So can you just say that again? The impervious pulling up the driveway is offsetting some of the 2,800?
Well, in my understanding, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but it's extent of lateral expansion and resulting impact on pervious area. Is that the language, Sarah, if I could?
The language is the extent of lateral, well, A, the extent of lateral expansion proposed, and B, the extent to which lateral expansion impacts the impervious area of the site.
So you're proposing, you're asserting that by pulling up a big portion of the driveway, making that shallow, not the whole driveway.
Not the whole driveway, that which is in the floodplain, which is the issue.
Yeah, okay.
That, yes, we are increasing the lateral expansion, or there is a lateral expansion of 200 and some square feet, but there is a tooth, a, at the same time, not a resulting, but a factor of a 2,863 square feet foot reduction of impervious surface within the flood zone.
Okay.
I think the issue that the bylaw is trying to address, all right, is, you know, we now, we know you have to go up a little bit, and you can go out somewhat, but not so much that we have floodwater problems in the area. And in this case, we're eliminating almost 3,000 square feet of pervious area, which is going to address the floodwater issue, to the group there is one. I did have a conversation with David Clark on this very issue earlier, and he can speak for himself, but it's my understanding that the record floods have not actually come into this flood zone. Is that correct, David? If I could, Madam Chairman, I'm Ms. Fenwick.
Good afternoon, David Clark, Clark Engineering. So I talked to Bill this morning because he had concerns about that section of the bylaw, and, and all the anecdotal information I have for the neighborhood, none of it deals with that low spot in the lot flooding during any of the record storm events we've had in the last 30 years. If you look at the site plan, the lowest adjacent grades next to the existing house is 11.2. Floodplain there is 11, I mean, is elevation 12. That changed substantially in 2014, as you all know, when the flood maps were revised. Prior to 2014, using the same datum, the flood elevation was 10. So this house wasn't even in the floodplain prior to 2014. The only real information that either FEMA has, it's not published in their flood insurance study that goes along with the map change in 2014. They do talk about the Halloween storm known as the No Name Storm of 91. Eldridge surveying did go around town, as documented in their office, pulling elevations all around town right after that storm. Chatham Fish Pier was the highest, and FEMA recognizes that's the, that was a 100-year storm event after a few years of analysis, but the elevation there was 9.3 under the old datum, which would convert to 8.4 under the new, the new datum. So the highest the water got, standing water elevation from the No Name Storm was 8.4. So this yard has never flooded during a storm event. It may see water, I mean, it might have water come up through, from groundwater, when you have a three-day northeaster like we did in 78, and then the back-to-back northeasters in 2007 or 17. Seems like some days the tide never goes out. You'll see, you'll probably see water come up through, from groundwater in that low spot in the yard, and that's why I think that catch basin is there. But water doesn't overtop the high spot in the yard from Crow's Pond. So I think flooding in that direction is really not a concern, although it is technically in the floodplain.
As of 2014, is that what you said? That's when the maps changed?
Well, that's when the maps changed, yeah. This was not in the floodplain prior to 2014.
But it is now.
It is now. Yeah.
And it has been since 2014.
Yeah.
And the Baldwins purchased it in 2020, so they knew when they purchased it that it was in this flood.
Yeah.
So, so just a quick summary here. So 80, 89% of the property is in the floodplain, and your, your building coverage number of 239 represents about 9% increase in building coverage. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then one quick question, sorry, Dave, or maybe Karen, you can. I just had a question about lowest adjacent grade. You, you have three numbers here on the site plan, I just want to confirm the accuracy, you know, because once the site plan's stamped in, and this is what we have, you have 8.9, 11.2, and 10. Which one is it?
11.2 is the existing lowest adjacent grade to the existing structure. The 8.9 is the existing lowest adjacent grade to the proposed structure. The 10.0, which I show on elevation certificate that was filed, is the proposed lowest finished grade. So you see on the plan, right south of the drive, the garage, it says landscape fill. So at the end of the day, for FEMA purposes, the elevation that I'll put on the final elevation certificate after construction will be elevation 10.
Okay. Because of the fill you're allowed to put around the.
Right, under that section of the bylaw for landscape purposes. Now, which, the 8.9 or the 10 that you use for zoning purposes, that's up to Jay. But Karen's height complies with the 8.9. If we use the 10, we gain that 1, 1.1 feet in height, so we're not constrained, it won't be exactly 30 feet if we use the 10.
Right.
But either way, it'll comply.
It could be a foot lower than, than the max.
Right.
Okay. But we won't know that until the ASB, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, in that, I have to use what the grade is placed against you.
Okay, so you're asking for the maximum, this is another question, Dave Beach had. You're asking for the maximum for this reason? Okay.
It, it is a challenging lot. The hope is to be below the maximum, as Karen explained, because of the way she does things, but we, we wanted to ask for it to give ourselves, I don't want to say flexibility, but a little wiggle room.
I frankly don't think the height is as big of an issue as the, the building coverage because of the neighborhood.
Yeah, and, and that's why we provided the third sheet that shows the footprint in comparison to the other houses in the neighborhood, and it remains modest. There's no question that we're above the 15%.
Yeah.
There's no, you know, that's doubtless. If, if we had been here before the flood maps changed, we'd be below the 15%, but we're not, so we're at a higher number.
Thank you.
And Steve, questions?
I have no additional question.
Lee?
No, you cleared a lot up for me, too. Thank you.
And Paul, questions?
The one question I have is, is the extent of the lateral expansion related to elevating the structure?
Indirectly, in that, for instance, we're losing the basement, we want to have a larger garage for storage. It's not, you know, because we, this is not a, this is not a house on Little Beach where we're lifting it up out of the floodplain. But we are taking it out, taking the living area out of the floodplain, and storage would be one aspect of it. Are there, are there, Karen?
Mechanicals on the first floor?
Mechanicals are no longer in the basement. Those are the sorts of things that are related to getting the living area out of the floodzone.
As I, as I recall the discussions with respect to that change to the ordinance, a lot of it was around the question of, well, if you elevate the structure, you're going to have to build stairs that are then going to come out three or four feet, and as a result, you're going to be, you have, you're going to have lateral expansion. That's not really what we're talking about.
No, that, that's not what we're talking about here, not, not stairs, but we are talking about changes which are necessitated because of the need to elevate it. I.e., the loss of basement storage. As Karen indicated, the garage is larger than it needs to be for two cars in order to have a storage area. The mechanicals can't be in the basement, and David may have.
If you, if you look at the building code and the requirements for elevating, if this, if we were doing nothing but renovating this building, and we exceeded the 50% value of the building, the building code says you must elevate the building so the lowest floor is one foot above the floodplain. In this particular case, the lowest floor for elevation certificate purposes of the existing building is the basement floor. So when you talk about elevating a building and, and the offset in lateral expansion, I would interpret the building code to mean the basement is included in that, because that's a space that has to be elevated to meet the building code if you, if you were dealing with that 50% rule. So the loss of basement translates into additional storage area above the floodplain or that complies with the building code in this instance.
What, what is the plan to change the driveway to pervious? What pervious are we talking about?
Shell gravel, combination shell gravel, which is sometimes seen, lasts a little bit better.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Dave Nixon has another question.
I had another one, when we were talking about elevating things and all that. As I recall, particularly in Little Beach, the, all the mechanicals have to be elevated.
Yes.
So is that true in this case, or no, because for some reason, the level, the ground level of the garage is sufficiently high?
The mechanical systems have to meet the same one-foot freeboard as the first floor. So if there are mechanical systems in the garage, they have to be at no lower than elevation 13.
Okay.
That's even the outside air conditioning units and the generator, which you can see on the plan, it's on an elevated platform behind the garage.
How many feet up is that, Karen?
Probably three feet. Yeah, it's like 30 inches.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially, because, because it's a new house, everything has to comply.
Yeah.
So my question is a little different. I had the opportunity to talk to staff about this issue of 2,800 feet, and we were looking at your plan and have at least, not a suggestion, but just something to bring to your attention as a possibility. You have an attached shed that's 8 by 22, and that's 176 square feet. And you also have an existing shed that you could use and leave, and if, so if you took away that attached shed, you'd only be increasing your square footage here by 63 square feet. We did all the math for you. So it's an opportunity for you to think about that, and you'd still have your shed, and you'd be below your 28, and you wouldn't have to make your bedroom smaller.
But I, and, and we certainly could consider that, but I guess the, the responsive question would be, would it be significantly different in terms of its detrimental effect on the neighborhood?
You might find in, with this board, that it may. When you ask to max out, people get their backup.
Well, I, I understand that, but I, we've done our best to explain why, why that is requested.
Yeah, but we'll see how it all shakes out. But so that was just, like I said, not even a suggestion, just something to bring to your attention, in case things.
No, we appreciate that. And that, that may well be the result. Obviously, the Baldwins are here, they're listening, and I've explained to many clients over the past that you can build less than what's approved, you just can't build more than what's approved.
And then they can put us on their payroll if they like the idea. So, all right, with that, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Beach seconds and votes yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. Okay, now we'll go to deliberations after all of that. Lee?
Well, this beautiful site, beautiful home, I think it's been a very thoughtful application on many fronts regarding the setbacks, regarding the distance from the coastal bank, regarding changing the driveway material. I think it meets our criteria. I, I was concerned about the 30-foot height and the 2,800 square feet building coverage, but if Karen has a system, I'm going to trust her. So I'm not voting today, but I think this is a beautiful project, and I would be voting in favor.
All right, thank you. And Paul, deliberations. What are you thinking?
I agree that the construction numbers are obviously very tight, but I think that they're forewarned with respect to that, and they'll stick to what needs to be done. We're dealing with a property with very little buildable upland, and when we've dealt with that in the past, we've looked at the extent of lateral expansion, and really, we're looking at the environmental impact that goes on here. Overall, I think the environmental, environmental impact here is positive because we're moving the house back from the water, and we're decreasing the pervious, the impervious driveway area. So I think, I see it in a different category from others that we've dealt with where I had more concern with respect to that issue. So I think that I will support the application.
And Dave Beach?
It, a very nice project. I mean, it's going to fit the neighborhood very well. It's in no way substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, as, as previous said, in many, many ways, it's improved the situation on the lot. And I think, I think I'd say with respect to the 2,800 square feet and the 30 square feet, I can appreciate that these folks have figured, you know, figured that in and decided that it's in their interest to ask for the max and shoot for under it. And that's a legitimate strategy, I think, but we're going to continue to question when those numbers are right up against the limits, so. But no, it's, it meets all our criteria, and I will support it.
All right, actually, Steve, you're next.
Well, I think this is a very nice project. It has a couple of pluses. It's moved away from the, from the coastal bank, which is a big plus. You've added a very large amount of pervious material, pervious area for the change of the driveway. You've eliminated the front-facing garage and given a view corridor down the driveway to the pond for others. You've, you know, increased the sightline for some neighbors. So I think it's a nice project, and I, I think it's going to fit well in the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Ed?
Yeah, I, I agree with my other fellow board members. I think you put a lot of thought into this. It's a difficult lot. I think the Baldwins probably understood that when they, they purchased it, and I feel like it's a thoughtful design. It is right at the 2,800 max, depending on your interpretation of the bylaw, I guess. But it seems like a relatively small increase in square footage, so if I was voting today, you'd have my support.
And David Nixon?
Well, I think I voiced my concern, and you answered what that was to be and how you're going to correct it. As you know, it would be very difficult if you had to come back for variance, it'd be very difficult. So I feel very confident that won't happen. And as far as this being a project, is this substantially detrimental to the neighborhood? Absolutely not. So I will be voting for it.
And Virginia Fenwick?
So I agree with my colleague's comments in general. I think there's no question that the proposed house is very attractive, both the street, Seapine, as well as Crow's Pond, the water. Subbacks have been approved, as was mentioned, pulling it back and correcting the western butter. I'm sure that the neighbor across the street from Seapine that now is going to have a better view down the driveway, that was very thoughtful by moving that east. And I, again, as part of the great plan. And then, as far as the size of the proposed, as I mentioned, I, I don't think that the size is the issue, height and, and the size. But what is the issue, in my view, is the lot. And coming in here tonight, I was. And coming in here tonight, I was thinking criteria one, four, and 12. Now, you've helped with 12 because of the impervious, the switch there, but I am still struggling with one and four. In particular, I don't know that I agree with that the adequacy of the site, including building coverage. Asking for 2,800 when you have 37, 41, is, I think, too big of an ask. And also, criteria four, suitability of the site for the proposed, I don't know that it's absolutely beautiful, but, you know, this proposal on a lot that's 89% in a floodplain gives me a little pause. And you've helped explain criteria 12. So I am not saying no, but those were my concerns.
So I would prefer that you didn't ask for the max on things, but I, you know, you're trusted professionals, so I understand the board's reliance upon your word. But I still think it sets some kind of a precedent where people come in and ask to max out a lot in a flood zone. So I would prefer that you aren't asking for those, and maybe you could, you know, amend your ask, even now or not. But again, you know, it would be hard to say no, so. What do you want me to say?
If that's a question to respond...
Please.
If the board would like to give us three minutes, you've had a long afternoon. If you want to take a five-minute break...
We were going to do that anyway.
Then we can come back after I can consult Mrs. Baldwin and our team.
Yeah, you understand our position? Thank you.
We understand that it's not substantially more detrimental, but we're trying to be cooperative.
Thank you. Very good. All right, so we will take a five-minute break. See you on the other side. And we're back. This is the August 22nd zoning board of appeals meeting, as continued.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Attorney Litchfield, what do you say?
Thank you very much. We appreciate the board's indulgence in allowing us to take a moment to meet and discuss options, and we can reduce the width of the shed by six inches. It is 22 feet long, so that would be an 11-square-foot reduction. The request would be for 2,789 square feet of coverage, which does two things, it keeps us below the non-precedent-setting maximum, because nothing you do sets a precedent, but it also provides even more room for cornerboards, if need be.
Okay. So, you take a vote on that, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with that amendment, and I assume we'll do our normal conditions with respect to this property, given the location.
We understand that.
So all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Dave Nixon?
I vote yes.
And Virginia Fenwick?
I vote yes.
All sample votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Of course. All right. And next, we're going to go to 52 Homestead Lane, application 24-088.
Application number 24-088, David Chu and Laura Tosi, Carib William F. Riley Esquire, appeal box 707, Chatham Mass. 02633. Owners are property located at 52 Homestead Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 15C Block 3, Lot 16. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, in that it is located 7.4 feet from the northern of Butter and 4.3 feet from the southern of Butter. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and that will be located 5.3 feet from the northern of Butter and 4.3 feet from the southern of Butter, where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 704 square feet, 18.8%, and the proposed building coverage is 918 square feet, 24.6%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, in that it contains 3,735 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5 be able protected by law.
Attorney Riley, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and welcome back to my clients, Ms. Tosi and Mr. Chu. This is a project I think the board has seen at least four times. So what I'd like to do is run down sort of the changes we made since our last application. So, one thing that hasn't changed is the size of the lot. But what we did do was, like on the rear setback, in our previous iteration, our setback was 15.6 feet from the rear lot line. We've increased that to 24.1 foot. The street setback was increased from 35.2 feet to 37.4 feet. So in other words, the building is shorter now than it was previously. Sideline setbacks remain the same. Proposed building coverage has been reduced from 1,187 square feet to 918 square feet, a reduction of 296 square feet, which effectively removes almost 200 square feet from the living area of each floor. In addition, we reduced the height of the building. So the Belvedere Ridge, which is the, right, the piece on top, is 28 feet, which is two feet below the maximum. The main ridge is actually five and a quarter feet below the maximum height. And so, you know, this is a home that David and Laura would like to live in, not year-round, but split between this house and their home in Washington, D.C. in their retirement years. And that's the purpose of this, to give them a suitable retirement home in a place where their grandchildren can come visit. So I'd like to ask Leslie to run through the architectural things and what she did to accomplish them, and then we'll talk about the criteria.
Good afternoon. Leslie Schneberger, architect for the project. It's been a while since we've seen you, and in between that time, we have gone through probably four more iterations, which is why it's been some time. Last time we were before you, I think, Virginia, you asked, actually commented, that maybe it was just not the right location for what Laura and David wanted to do, given the size of the lot, and why are they continuing to stay there. Laura and David have owned the property for 25 years, and Laura's mother owned the house next door, so she grew up going to this exact area for 40 years. They have moorings on the pond, and they are dedicated, they love this place. And there was no question that this is where they want to be, now that they have time to be here more. So we went through a lot, a lot of changes to make sure that we respected what the board was asking and could make something feasible at this location. What does that mean? That means we removed a number of things. The last plan that was before you had a large laundry mudroom space on that ground level. It had a third bedroom on, at the time, we were calling the main level, because you came in at a ground level, went up to the primary floor of the house, that could be one-floor living of a bedroom, kitchen, and living area. We took away the bay window that was facing back to the backyard. We reduced the size of the front deck. The size of the Belvedere is reduced. There was a question last time, can we have a cupola? There was certainly no false implication that it was simply something to let light in. A definition of a cupola is an enclosed space. A Belvedere is an enclosed space for a view. So that represents 19% of the footprint of the house, of the height of the house, and that is a little space up at the top to sit and enjoy the view that we've talked about in the past. We did add a cellar to the house, because we did remove mechanical and reduce the footprint, so storage and mechanical has now gone down to the basement. I actually will jump right now and clarify that you did receive some revised numbers. The gross floor area was not including that cellar previously. It has no windows, it has nothing that allows it to be habitable, but it does have a clear height that is above seven feet. I clarified that with Jay today, and so that the gross square footage, this was not meant to be false advertising, but the gross square footage should in fact be 2,335 square feet. We also removed the transom windows on the second floor, which were to let a lot more light in, and we still have lots of windows, but we've reduced some, and the reduction of those transoms allowed us to bring the roof pitch of the dormer from a four down to a 5.25. And Bill is correcting me, that I just told you the wrong number, I'm sorry. On the gross square footage is 2,860 square feet, 2,960 square feet.
Right.
Stay with that. And I will have a plan of that basement to everyone tomorrow. So the lower pitch on the dormer is bringing down the whole massing. We don't, I didn't, we don't have an overlay of the front, but the height, as you can see, has come down considerably. That southwest elevation that's up right now is showing the elevation that was before you previously to what is there now. You can see that everything has come down considerably and come in considerably. The cellar, I already had commented on, and then there is a small balcony at the back. While it's not required for building code egress, it was a request that we looked at, given the living space on the second floor, just to have an extra, should you not be able to get out at the front of the house, there's something that you can get to at the back. I'll leave it at that and answer questions as they come.
All right, so what happened is, after your last meeting, or our last meeting, on this property, the principal issues that were raised, I watched the meeting, despite the pain, just yesterday, and the principal concerns were the length of the building and the height of the building. And I think David and Laura have really paid attention to your concerns. So the building has been reduced from 90 feet to about 60 feet in length, well, 60 feet to 44 feet in length. The width remains the same, because it's still a very narrow property, but because the reduction in height, we think that the concerns that I recall... reduction in height, we think that the concerns that I recall being expressed by Ms. Hovey were that the building was too tall and too narrow and was unattractive because of that. And so, we tried to address all those concerns. So, we think, and the adequacy of the size of the site, that because our building coverage has been reduced to 918 square feet, we think that the site is adequate for a building with 918 square feet of building coverage. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, we have a sheet attached on the back that shows you that we are very much compatible with the neighboring properties. Some of the neighboring homes are older and smaller, and some of the ones that are newer are larger, but we think we are compatible in that regard. Extend and propose increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. Here, we're increasing the living space, which, as you know, under Bransford constitutes an intensification of the nonconformity. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. Here, we have a situation where, as you look at the building from the street, on the left side, the property adjacent to us, the night property, is level. And so, if there were to be stormwater runoff, it's going to stay on our property. The property on the right-hand side is actually a little bit elevated from our property. So, if there's any stormwater, it's going to run onto our property from their property. So, we think that the site is suitable for the proposed project. The impact of scale, siding, and mass on the neighborhood visual character, again, it's, you know, it's always going to be a narrow building because it's a narrow lot. But the, we have reduced the height, and so if you think about scale, siding, and mass, what we've done is we've done what we can to reduce the mass while still providing suitable living accommodations for David and Laura, who want to live there a significant portion of the time. So I think that you could
Attorney Riley, those five are the ones that I think are important for this one. If you're willing to forego the rest, I think we'd be comfortable with that. We've seen this property numerous times, so.
That's fine.
Yeah. Oh, great. Great. Anything else?
I can talk long if you want.
No, it's okay. All right. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate. Seeing none, I have five letters to read, starting with Judith Giorgio, our health agent, writes to us on 8/20/2024. She reviewed the proposed plan for the property. She was not provided with floor plans of the existing dwelling. However, the proposed dwelling appears to maintain a two-bedroom layout. The belvedere with open stairway is not considered a bedroom. The property is connected to the municipal sewer, and any additional floor will require wire and sewer approval. Then we have a note from Christina Bassett. The CHC heard this application on May 23rd, actually, May of 2023, and found the home not to be historically significant and did not impose a demolition delay. And that came to us on Thursday, August 1st. Now, I have a lengthy letter from Michelle Forgeron Schofield, received on August 22, 2024. She's writing as the northerly neighbor of Tosi and Chu and the owner of 94-year-old Forgeron Family Home at 50 Homestead. She's previously, she has previously stated that we should all be neighborly, and they believe that they have a right to make changes or improvements to property. If we adhere to the statutes in place that are designed to preserve more than just harmony within our town, my concerns remain steadfast regarding the hedge planted to my family in the late 1930s and 40s. As previously submitted opinions unto Chatham professionally, professionals, business owners, Thad Eldridge, professional land surveyor, and Tim Kent-Aberis support the view that my neighbors' plans will detrimentally affect these hedges. I also remain concerned about the extremely small lot size of 52. The ridge and elevation heights, square footage, the number of floors of the neighboring homes should not be used to justify my neighbors' requests because their lot size is so much smaller than other immediate, in the immediate area. Other neighbors have bigger homes and have made reasonable requests without opposition because they have bigger lots to balance out that change. My position is that allowing that tall of a dwelling on an extremely small and already non-conforming lot will change the aesthetics of the neighborhood and not fit with the desired look and feel of Homestead Lane. Quite frankly, I fear it could also potentially lead to the southern neighbors planting of new or growing existing hedges or even higher hedges to address their valid concerns of privacy and noise, and that would create further unfriendly dividers in our little neighborhood nook. If these things happen, my family will be left with a southerly view of a tall shadow-producing home squeezed in a tiny lot only several feet away from our shared property line and walls of towering hedges by the abutters. Again, I appreciate the desire to regain a view of Little Mill Pond. We sadly lost our front porch years ago, but I think the precedent anyone wants to set for a very small lot in this charming area of Chatham with the non-conforming property setbacks is to keep the building, keep building higher. Again, it's the tiny lot size and non-conforming property setbacks for 52 that make the elevation increase and proposed square footage unreasonable. Again, there is a unique charm and character that I cherish on our lane, and I hope it is fiercely protected by not setting the wrong precedent and allowing requests for excessive nonconformity. I will continue to trust this board's decision as the fair and adjudicating body for what it has allowed in Chatham and specifically on our beloved Homestead Lane. Thank you, Michelle Forgeron Schofield. Next, I have a letter on, from Christina Stamos. She is the property owner located at 77 Mill Pond and Abutto, a property at 52 Homestead. And she says, "I will be unable to attend the hearing on August 22, but I'm writing to express my continued concerns and opposition to the revised plans in the application for a new dwelling submitted by David and Laura Tosi, owners of the non-conforming lot and dwelling at 52 Homestead Lane. I have carefully reviewed the revised proposal, including elevations and plans submitted, and I will continue to be very concerned about the adverse impact of the new dwelling that it would have on my property, already limited privacy and the character of the street and the neighborhood. The revised proposal continues to not address the concerns raised August 10, 2023, and January 11, 2024 meetings. Specifically, the proposed, the proposal to build 1,972-square-foot dwelling with a building coverage of 918 square feet in place of the current 704 single-story house continues to be excessive. Under the revised proposal, the building coverage will be more than 60% over the max allowed, and other nonconformities will be further increased. As a result, I continue to be concerned that the disproportional large dwelling built on this very small, narrow lot will be squeezed in between the adjacent properties and make the street look tightly packed with dwellings and adversely impact the neighborhood look and character. The revised proposal yet again includes a second-floor deck and large windows that would adversely affect my and surrounding properties' already minimal privacy. It will provide a direct view into my property, including my bedrooms, bathrooms, and shower. The effect that the proposed dwelling will be located 4.3 feet from the southern border, where a 15-foot setback is required further increases my concerns. In addition, the property, property's belvedere floor with large windows and a deck facing the southern side would further provide a direct and even more intrusive view into my property. Given the height, we would not even be able to maintain tall enough hedges to preserve our privacy. The proposed second-floor deck would create another source of noise at a higher level in an area where acoustics are so poor that one can hear every sound coming from the interior of neighbors, neighboring houses, let alone outdoor spaces. I revise, the revised proposal continues not to address those concerns that I have and the abutters have, and I continue to be strongly opposed." Next, we have a note from Christian and Erin Triber from, they live in Dallas, Texas, and also 76 Mill Pond Road in Chatham. They write on August 12, 2024. They're writing on behalf of their neighbors at 52 Homestead, hoping to improve their property. And they've been fortunate to know the homeowners, and they've been spending summers in that area for 20 years, and they purchased in 2014. They were welcomed by the homeowners, Laura and David, and have been enjoying the Mill Pond since the 1980s. The property was perfect for them as their moorings in Little Pond are close proximity to the town landing. When in Chatham, Laura and David spend every minute possible on their boat, enjoying the water. We have several conversations with them over the years about their plans. They want to build a home to allow their children and families to visit, but they recognize the neighborhood concerns and have reduced their plan to four rooms plus a small belvedere to allow a view of the Mill Pond. In the past, their homes had a view of Mill Pond, so their view was unobstructed. I believe they have cut their plan severely so that the lot coverage will only be a little bit more than it is than the current. They have even taken steps about the height of the home, and we hope the ZBA will approve and allow them to improve their property and use for their use to further beautify the neighborhood. We built our home, and we agreed to keep the hedge at a low height so neighbors behind us could also enjoy the view. It would be wonderful if the neighbors would also offer the same view to Laura and David by cutting their hedges currently well over 10 feet to an acceptable height. We all bought in this area knowing that the properties are close together. It's part of the appeal of the neighborhood. Therefore, David and Laura's plans should only help to improve the area that we are excited for, and we're excited for their completion." That concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application that hasn't written already or has a question? Seeing none. Questions from the board?
Oh, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, sir. Rebuttal?
Very briefly.
Yep. Sorry. Yes, no, my bad. Yep.
Oh, sorry. So, the only comment I would make about Ms. Stamos is that her house, as measured by Mr. Clark, is 47 feet from our house. I mean, the sideline setbacks, as pointed out by Mr. Veatch in the last meeting, you know, in this zone is 15 feet. So in other words, the town, under its zoning bylaw, assumes that houses that are only 30 feet apart have sufficient space. Here, we have almost 50 feet between the two houses. So, we think that the changes that have been made and the distance between these two houses and the height of the hedges there behind Ms. Stamos's house, I mean, what we're proposing is reasonable and will not intrude any more on her property than the previous structure. With regard to Ms. Forgeron, if you look on our site plan, you can see that because we've moved the house back, that if Ms. Forgeron was standing on her front porch, she would have a clear view down Homestead Lane to the Mill Pond. And the, as we said in the past, you know, we've assured her, or tried to, that we're going to protect the hedges during the construction, assuming this is approved. And so, we think, again, this is a reasonable use in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Questions? Jenny Fenwick?
I have no questions.
Steve? We're just going to go right around.
All right. I have a couple of questions, I guess. If you, if you go to page
Your microphone. Your microphone. Thank you.
Sorry. I have a couple of questions. If you go to page A1 dot 1, on the bottom of that page, it shows the belvedere, belvedere floor plan with a deck, and that deck seems to be flush with the sidewall of the house.
Yes.
Then if you go to the next page, A2 dot 0, it has the south elevation, southeast elevation, which is the front of the house, but it doesn't show that deck or even the railing. And I would think, I would think that you would see at least the railing. I'm guessing that that deck is sort of in that roof line somehow. It's recessed into the roof line, so that the, you would see at least the railing in that left picture for where the deck is.
You would see approximately a foot of that railing. I apologize that it's not there. Correct.
Right. Okay. And then also on that same page, on the, on the picture, on the, on the drawing on the right, it seems that the deck is protruding past the sideline of the house.
No. That's trim. It is not.
Okay. Okay. Then that's it. I just wanted to, just to verify.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Lee?
Questions? One quick question on A1 point 0. I see the outline of the house, but then up to the left, it looks like walls, and maybe it's just, maybe it is walls. Is that like a little terrace?
It is. It's hatched because it is landscape walls. And it's actually, it's lowered down because when you come into the house, you go down a little bit. So to come out of that bedroom onto a terrace, it's sunken, so it has landscape retaining walls around it, and that's what that is.
Okay. Okay.
You know, one of the things we, you know, that you should be aware of is that after the last meeting, they actually sunk the foundation another foot deeper so that when you, when you step into the house, you step down to the first floor.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. I see that. Thank you.
All right. Paul? Questions?
I have no questions.
David Nixon?
No questions.
Yeah? Questions?
Uh, no questions.
And David Veatch?
I have a few.
All right.
So, you, I've been looking at this quite a bit today and a few days previous and previous meetings and things. And did you, I'm just wondering, did you consider a rendering or a model or something? Because this is an instance where I think it could be helpful to us, and I don't know if you considered it or not. I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, no, but I think that the shaded version that Leslie just
Yeah. And I, that's, that's helpful. I, well, let me, let's see if we can confirm a few things because I went back out there to do, as I sometimes do, in trying to, in visualizing, basically, in trying to take this thing off of the page and visualize it in relationship to the buildings there. And, and what I came away with was that it actually, in trying to do that, to me visually, it actually, when I try to do that, it looks lower than it does on the paper. So just to say that. So what I did was, I, I basically superimposed on your drawings the line of the existing ridge of the house and the line of the eaves of the existing house. And what that looks like to me, just to confirm whether this is true, so the existing ridge is at elevation 33.1. And to me, that, when I put that onto your drawing, it shows that that ridge line basically crosses, it runs just about under the eaves of the dormer on the second floor.
I agree with what you found.
Okay. So then, the eaves, the, of the, the current eve, eaves of the building, more or less correspond fairly close to the second-floor level. So that would go across, you know, a little bit above those lower, the lower bank of windows between there and the windows between there and the second floor bank of windows. That's, that's the existing eve line of the existing building. I was going to ask Jay, but he's not here. It occurs to me that, looking at some of the different iterations here, and the last time was when you went into this, into the idea of the belvedere.
Yes.
And you sunk the basement further down, so that, based on the bylaw saying that you can have, you know, two finished floors, two and a half finished floors, and not both finished basement and finished two and a half story. Jay last time said, his interpretation, we hadn't encountered the term belvedere, but he said he considered it to be a half-story.
Correct.
You know, the half-story. So, would you agree, it sounds to me like you're essentially saying that some of the past plans showed a finished basement or future finished basement and two floors above?
Correct.
But by going to this plan, instead of being able to finish the, almost the entire floor area of a basement, you are saying, we're proposing to have a finished 160-some square feet half-story on the top.
You're exactly right, which is part of where I wasn't putting it into the gross square, gross footage originally.
Yeah, okay. So, some of the other plans had actually come to us with more floor area. Well, I know, because the building was longer, so you've reduced the length of it as well. And then, so that was, and so I just wanted to clarify that, because it's the first time I'd seen it in that manner. And then, so the other thing that I'm just wondering, and thank you for giving us the information on ceiling heights and things, I guess I'm curious, you still, you have nine-foot ceiling on the first floor, and I was surprised to go to the floor plans and see that that's the bedrooms and things like that, and you've kept it at 7.6 or 7.4 and a half on the, on the main floor, if you will. I mean, I'm sure that's a choice that was decided by you and the owners, I'm just curious as to how, that strikes me as being a little unusual.
So, we sunk the first floor because the priority certainly was to make sure there was a lot of light coming in with a lot of height. On the second floor, it's part of the kitchen, we did sacrifice going lower to make sure we could have that belvedere. And then the, on either side of that, we have some cathedral ceilings.
Cathedral, so that's what it was the last time as well.
Exactly.
Okay. And so, Bill, you quoted that, you know, the, it's 47 feet to the, the house at 70, is it 70 whatever on Milpon Lane?
60 feet to 44.
Yeah. Did you happen to shoot the ridges of any of the surrounding buildings to be able to compare to what we've, what you're proposing?
We actually, we did at the very first hearing, and I'm afraid I didn't bring it back. David did bring ridges of adjacent, I'm sure the paperwork on the original has it, but I'm sorry that I don't right now.
Okay. Well, it would just be, I mean, I am coming at it from the saying, you know, it actually is surprising to me that it really doesn't seem to project up as much as it might appear on this page. All right, I think that's all I have for now, thanks.
Okay. Dave Nixon? Do we have any questions here? No, no questions? Okay. Questions? Yeah, you did. Everybody do questions?
Everybody better.
All right, I lost track.
Tell it yourself.
I have a question. So, have you thought about eliminating that belvedere top? And then you'd have a very nice house on a small lot, and, you know, maybe your neighbors would be happier because it wouldn't be so tall. Have you thought about it?
Candidly, not really.
Yeah, no, because when you...
See, the whole purpose of this, this is, Laura has lived there with her family for over 40 years. Over the years, because their neighbors have allowed the hedges to go up, they've lost, you know, their view of the Milpon, which used to be very clear. So, they put the belvedere up so that they can go up to that level, look out over the tops of their neighbors and see the Milpon, so...
They could also walk down there, but yeah, there's that. That would be to be, I'm not trying to be a jokester, but I'm just asking if you considered that. I'm not saying that I would vote against it with it, but when you put your finger on it and take it away, it looks like a nice house on a tiny little lot. You have to admit that.
Sorry, I don't like the look of the belvedere. The original plan, the plans that have come before you before was bringing the entire second floor up to that height that you would see the view.
And we didn't, yeah.
In an ideal world, when we started, you know, the idea was to be able to sit in the living room and have a view out between the neighbor's house up to actually big Milpon that had been in the past. That's where I say we've made a lot of concessions and we've looked at a lot of design changes to still achieve what we're looking for instead in a, out-of-the-way room that can spend the day.
So, it's very important for you to...
Very important.
Yeah, I got that. Okay, I'm just asking, just questions now? All right, so Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
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 And I vote yes, too. Okay, deliberations. Paul?
Well, you've, you've certainly made an awful lot of effort in this, on this lot, and a lot of different designs. And I realize that there's a lot of history for your clients with respect to this property. I am having difficulty with what is really criteria five, which is the impact of scale, sitting and mass on the neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. It seems to me that with the addition of the belvedere area, it just becomes too big, a building for the location. And the impact of that on the overall visual character of the neighborhood will be significant. So, I sympathize with what you're trying to do, but I'm just not sure that you're able to accomplish the overall goals that you have with this lot without having a house that just does not necessarily accomplish the goals that you want. So, I think consistent with our ordinance, I would have to say that the design is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, Dave Nixon?
Yeah, I feel quite different than Paul. To me, after four, five, six times, whatever this has been, it's finally come to a point where everything that you folks could possibly do to make this more palatable to the neighborhood, you've done. And I actually like the belvedere, and that's the only time you'll ever hear that. Out of these lips, I guarantee you, in fact, I didn't, I hadn't even heard the word before, well, in the sense of construction, okay? But what you've done is you made the house smaller, you've reduced everything possible. And I can understand why they want something to give them a view of the pond, and this is minor to me. And I don't think it impacts the neighborhood the way others do, because frankly, when you drive down Homestead, you're looking here, you're looking there, you're not looking at the side of this house. You're not. You're looking straight on, and then, oh, look at that house, look at that house, oh, there's the Milpon. So, I don't see that it would affect the neighborhood from a site standpoint. I think you and Mr. Riley and your clients, you've, you've knocked your head against the wall long enough, really, long enough, and I will be happy to support this.
All right, Dave Veitch?
Gee, it's a good thing they changed the name from Cooper to Belvedere.
I couldn't have said that if it said Cooper.
Well, I, I very much agree with Dave on this one. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I just, just this afternoon, and I didn't make enough copies, but I did this little halfway kind of thing of trying to illustrate. I had a photograph that I'd taken of the house, and it just happened to be the photograph was of just about the eighth inch scale as the drawings we had. So, you know, I'll share one with that, I've got one here, and just pass that, pass that around, and just because, because I think, again, I, the, what I said earlier about the impact of the, of the appearance of this relative to the building that's there is not as, it's not as, it doesn't appear as tall and out of place as it seems when I'm just looking at the elevations, you know, just sort of the tyranny of an elevation. And particularly, just in this photograph, shows a corner of the Forgeron House, which I don't think is much, the eve of that house is probably right up near where this one is going to be. So, I had very much been concerned about this scale setting mass with respect to neighborhood visual character, but I'm not concerned with that now. I mean, I, this is not the greatest, I don't know if I did my other one, but representation, but it gives me an idea. And I do think that had, had we been provided with a model, that I think it could well have shown that in the context, that what they've done, they've done enough, and I agree with Dave. They've been through a lot, and I think that the, as I pointed out earlier, that making the choice to essentially sacrifice the, an entire level, or almost an entire level of, that they could, in other former plans, showed as finished space, in order to create and have the belvedere up there, I don't feel, I think they've given up quite a bit, and I think that the, having it up there is something that they'll use from time to time to get some of their view back. You know, it's interesting also, I sit, you know, down on Milpon Road and stopped, and I've taken any number of photos of this, and especially this time of year, and the, you know, the downstream hedges are very significant on the neighbor's properties there. And, and you can't, if you stand down on Milpon Lane and look up to the house, and you can't see any of the existing houses up there. You can see the chimney of the Forgeron House uphill from it. But that to me, and then when I put that relationship to the new building, to that existing thing, this is not going to stand out from almost any perspective, maybe to some degree from the Forgerons, and it's going to have another floor on it, but we've, we've said all along, we don't want to be saying that you can't have another floor on your house. So, I think they've, they've done more than enough, and if they're going to be happy with this, I fully support it. I think that they've done what they need to do, and it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood at all, not at all. Thanks.
Okay, Ed?
I agree with, with both days that the applicants have done a number of changes, have tried to make this as palatable as possible to, to the neighborhood. I think they've done a good job. I don't think it's going to be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it'll be a nice addition, and if I were voting, I would support it.
All right, very good. Lee?
Okay, first of all, I love this. This is great, really.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I was looking at it and I go, geez.
No, no, this was helpful to me. So, originally, I was concerned with criteria number one regarding the size of the site. When it came to the building height, I was like, it's just too small of a lot to have a building that high. I think what you've done with reducing the majority of the house, the height, has been helpful. I also think that if you look at it in context, and this is another way that this picture really helps me, is that there's some very mature trees. And I think that helps. So, I'm, as I said, not voting today, but I would support this, and I appreciate everything you guys have done and how much you've listened and tried to, you know, listen to our concerns.
Thank you. Okay, Steve? Somebody's ringing, you know, I don't like that.
Well, certainly, there's, there's been, I know this is third or fourth time this has been around, you've certainly worked very diligently to make some concessions to try to appease the neighbors, so...
We were trying to appease the board members.
Well, and, okay. So, you know, it looks like you've put a lot of effort into trying to, to make something harmonious over there, and the thing that Dave provide, Dave Veitch provided, is very helpful. It sort of looks like this house is set back further than, than the neighbors, so it may not impede their view of the pond. Maybe if these other hedges were trimmed down a little bit, it might make it a little bit easier, but I think it's a good project, it's a very difficult lot, and I think you've worked diligently to try to, to make a nice house fit where it's difficult to fit, so I would probably support this as it was.
And Jenny?
I agree with you, Mr. Riley, and Leslie did a nice job summarizing, listing it here and enumerating it, articulating it. So, I think you have addressed the concerns that we brought up last time, and a couple times, but it's particularly last time. You know, one of the comments I made about the lot, I did make that, it was not suggesting that they move. I think I said, it was a great neighborhood, I wouldn't want to move either. And I said, you know, really the only thing you can do is go up, and no one was saying, you know, that you can't go up. So, that's what you've done. You've gone up, you've actually gone down, you've dug down, you've made significant, meaningful improvements, setbacks, you've met all the existing neighbor setbacks, that was a concern with such a tight, constrained lot. Coverage reduced significantly, your ask from previous times, your height has come way down, and I wanted to just say we appreciate all the perseverance that you've had and your applicants, and I would support it.
All right. I'm inclined to support it. I hope that they go ahead and build a house, because I really do, because it's...
I do as well.
Yeah, yeah, you think they will?
I believe they will.
I hear it.
All right, you're on record now. Yeah, so I'll support it. All right, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with our standard conditions, that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 30 and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work should be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Dave Nixon?
I vote yes.
Jenny?
I vote yes.
I'll vote no.
And I'll vote yes. And good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep, don't come back now, you hear? No. Yep, yep.
Jamie?
That's a junk pile. Yes.
I'll bring you the next episode of the Bill and Bill Show.
All right. All right. Take care now?
I have to sign that?
Yes, well, oh, you have to sign it, yep. There we go. Okay, Shirley Drive, that's an easy one. Yep. Drive Kehoe?
I am. You have to go that way.
All right. Okay, so the next application is, let's see, 24-08949 Shirley Drive, and we will go to that when Sarah's ready. I will. Yes. So, one of our voters has to leave, so now it's going to be Ed Acton voting on this one.
Application number 24-089, Christopher Gorham and Elizabeth H. Gorham, Carav Williams, G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham Mass. 02... G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 49 Shirley Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessories Map, 1B, Block 11, Lot N15. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and that it is located 14.9 feet from the Easterly Abutter where a 15-foot setback is required. The proposed additions will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Master General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,013 square feet, 7.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,540 square feet, 12% or 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains 13,049 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
Welcome back, Attorney Litchfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Christopher and Elizabeth H. Gorham, who were behind Karen Kempton. They've owned this house since 2001. They would like to make some changes in anticipation of retirement. They didn't know when this hearing began, how much closer they would be to retirement at its conclusion, but that is why we are here. You've seen the plans, you've been out there, and unless you'd like me to do otherwise, I'll go directly into the criteria.
That'd be great, and you can limit it to the ones that are really applicable.
As to adequacy of site, we currently have a typical lot, 7.9% coverage, which is the lowest in the neighborhood. You can approve the special permit based on the site being adequate for the additions at the rear and at the side, allowing for more useful kitchen, and a larger first-floor bedroom, all of which meet all setback requirements, and we're well below the maximum coverage. As to compatibility of size, on the third page, you have what's going on in the neighborhood. We have a small footprint at 1,000 square feet, and even with the basement and the screen porch, a low gross floor area completely compatible, you can approve the special permit based on the finding that it will remain so. The expansion of the kitchen is at the rear, and the mudroom entryway, while increasing the size, are reasonable, the house remains modest and compatible, meets all dimensional requirements, as the extent of increase in nonconformity is none. The site is suitable, there are no environmental issues, as the scale, sitting mass, views, and vistas, the scale of what is there now is appropriate, excuse me, as it has been since it was built in 1955, is typical of the neighborhood, it's without impact and views and vistas, and the special permit can be granted on a finding that, pardon me, it's an appropriate and simple design, I'm sorry, which mirrors the existing house, and is without impact on streetscape. The closest neighbor, including the one on whose side the mudroom will be built, as well as others, have been consulted and endorsed the plan. The only comment I would make beyond that is that the health agent wrote a suggestion that we have either a deed restriction or a casement opening in the mudroom. The Gorhams have no desire to sleep in the basement, so we will probably ignore that they have any desire for a fourth bedroom, so if the health agent requires it, we will certainly execute a deed restriction. So, the issue, as you know, is whether constructing a new first-floor master bedroom and an expanded kitchen, completely compliant as to all bylaw requirements, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. As expanded, it will be well below allowable coverage, minimal impact on the streetscape, and the house will remain compatible, so I think you can find the proposed additions meeting all zoning requirements, are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I could go on for 10 minutes, but I know you don't want me to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, I will read the correspondences, and there are five. First, we have a note from our health agent, dated April 20, 2024. She reviewed the plan to renovate and add an addition to the property. It has three bedrooms, and the proposed addition must maintain a three-bedroom layout, the mudroom entry will not be approved as a bedroom, a deed restricting the property, three bedrooms may be required, other space can be revised to include a cased opening to enter the full basement. A new addition will not encroach on the septic. Then we have a note from Maureen Dornahue Augema, and she lives at 48 Shirley Drive. She writes to support the application for a special permit, and the petition hearing will be held today, and we have owned the residence at 48 since 1972, and we have no objections. That was received today. And then we have James Horn and Barbara Carroll residing at 37 Shirley, and they are in complete support of the construction, and we received that on August 19. And then we have a note from Bob Kelleher, received August 14, 2024. Good afternoon. Elizabeth Gorham has shared the plans for the building plan next to our property, and Sheila and I have no objection at all to what they propose. Thank you. And that is from Bob Kelleher at 59 Shirley Drive. And lastly, we have a note from David and Kathleen Steele, 38 Shirley Drive. We are fully in support of the application made by Christopher and Elizabeth Gorham, and that was received on August 3, 2024. That's that. Anybody here on Microsoft Teams wish to speak against this application or has a question? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Are there any? Anybody? Go ahead, Steve.
I just have sort of an, that's not a question, but it's more of an observation, it's more of an observation than a question. If you look at page one of the existing, the screen porch appears to be on the left side of the house, or the west elevation. If you go to the first page of the proposed, it's suddenly moved to the east side, so I think the notations are incorrect, that's all.
The screen porch is indeed on the east side. The site plan is sort of, I want to say it's upside down, but let me, which page was that?
I think it's the first page of the existing and the first page of the proposed.
Existing floor plan is correct, in that it shows the screen porch on the left, at least on what I have.
Yeah.
And proposed.
I think the notations are just backwards, between the east and west side.
Oh, I see what you mean.
That is the case. I noticed it as well, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to make that.
No, I see what you're saying. We know where the screen porch is, and it's not moving.
Right, it hasn't moved, right?
Okay. Paul, questions?
I have no questions.
Does anybody else have any questions? Just want to make sure. Jenny, go right ahead.
So, this is not, this is really just from my own learning, and maybe this is Ed or Dave Veach would know this. So, the height calculations on the site plan, typically, we, I thought we looked at proposed ridge minus average grade, and this is, I mean, height is not an issue, that's, I'm just bringing this up for clarification. This one is height calculations are saying, using the terms maximum ridge elevation less top of foundation. Is there a difference? Yeah, okay. So, is it typical to not have, like our standard? Just.
I think what happens is sometimes you have different engineers do things differently.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
No, this was done by Moran Engineering rather than Mr. Clark, and I think it may be just a stylistic issue. The height of the ridge is not increasing, obviously, and the mudroom is down a level.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nope, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations. Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed seconds and votes yes, or vote.
Ed votes yes.
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 Yes, and I vote yes as well. Okay, deliberations. Jenny?
Yeah, I think that the, there are nice improvements to all four sides of the home. I'm happy to see that, well, I understand that they want to increase their space for retirement, I think that's great. Appears to me that the proposed changes are thoughtful, very practical, and I would support the project.
And Steve, we'll just go right around?
Okay, no, I think it's a nice project, you know, most of the work seems to be towards the rear of the house, on the side, has no impact.
I agree with my colleagues, I think it's a great project, it's modest expansion, but I think it's going to make a big difference.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Ed?
I agree.
And I agree with all previous.
As do I. Okay, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. Bill, do you anticipate?
Acceptable, I spoke with the Gorhams.
On the condition that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work should be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed Acton votes yes.
And Jenny?
I vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
And it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a nice night. Last but not least, 24-090, we have 26 Cranberry Lane, and that's Attorney Riley once again.
Application number 24-090, Anne Palermo McCready, Trust, Carav William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 26 Cranberry Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessories Map, 15J, Block 26, Lot 17. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition and the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and that it is located 7.9 feet from the Easterly Abutter, 22.1 feet from the Westerly Abutter, and five feet from the Southernly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing exterior mechanical system appliances are nonconforming, and that they are located 1.7 feet from the Southernly Abutter. The proposed addition will comply with all dimensional requirements of the bylaw, the proposed exterior mechanical system appliance generator will be nonconforming, and that it will be located 9.1 feet from the Southernly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,193 square feet, 11.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,608 square feet, 15% or 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it has zero feet of frontage where 150 feet is required, and contains 10,700 square feet where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
Welcome.
Thank you, and the final version of the Bill and Bill Show. One thing I would like to correct, we're not asking for 15% lot coverage, we're way down to 14.97%, just so you know. And the, because of that, I had a conversation with Anne McCready, who's sitting here, and Scott, to explain to them that if you go over, you can't come back here to get it fixed. Explain the, you know, the reason why that's the case. And so, you know, the plan at this point is that, working with Clark Engineering and the contractor, they'll make sure that nothing is built that exceeds that number, so, I want to get that clear right away. This is an addition, basically 20 by 26, that gives the McCready's a nice family room. Can I show the floor plan? Yeah, so, basically, it's, they have the family room here, plenty of room to mix and mingle. So, the design is by Karen, so I'm going to ask Karen to explain the process she went through with the McCready's and how they came up with this design.
Karen Kempton, architect for Anne and Scott McCready. When I first met with Anne and Scott, they had four goals for this property. If we can bring up A6, which is the existing first-floor plan, they wanted a larger family room, as Bill said, they wanted to open up the kitchen and provide a mudroom laundry room area on the first floor. As you can see on the right-hand side, that's the existing first floor, the kitchen is constrained in a U shape, and the, what is called the den area is 13 feet wide, which is basically their living room right now. The addition, in addition, the windows in this den or living room space are six feet away from their neighbor's house, so although they do like their neighbors very much, they want a larger family room located on the north side of the house to enjoy views to their backyard. Originally, we had looked at having the second-floor studio space above this room, but we decided that this space would be better as a one-story addition to the already two-story existing house. So, if we can bring up the photograph of the front of the existing house. We took the reference of the existing side porch where you can see that hip roof wrapping around, and utilized that on our new front elevation, if you go down to A3, there you This side porch roof line utilized in the new design as a wraparound porch look houses the new laundry room and the mudroom area. As much as they love the existing covered porch, they're willing to give this up to obtain a larger, more open family room. However, we have saved an element of the existing side porch as a covered porch, a six-by-six area to come in to the side. We have also placed a pergola and a deck on this side to reference the original outside living space. If we go to the first-floor plan, the kitchen remains in the same location, but is now open to the family room and has an island for seating. The laundry has been moved from the basement and is located in the mudroom on the first floor. The McCready's this summer adopted a huge dog, which is a Leon Burger, I don't know if you saw him out there, he's a puppy right now, and he's already at 150 pounds, so that made the need for a side mudroom entry that much more important for them. Finally, we wanted to create a more welcoming front door than what exists there, so we have removed the bulkhead which is on the front, and relocated the outdoor shower, and created a small overhang with brackets over the existing front door to make it more welcoming. As to the building coverage, although we show the maximum allowed at 15%, in reality, by how the addition will be built, when I spoke with Clark back and forth, it appeared that the new addition was going to be built next to the existing wall, rather than incorporated into the existing wall, so that, again, saved us some square footage from what was proposed. But again, I'm asking for the 15% or what Bill has said, 14.97, even though in reality I am still 17 square feet less than that. Again, I wanted a buffer for ourselves during construction. We think this is an attractive addition to the house, minimal in mass and scale, giving the McCready's some much-needed additional living room, living space. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So, I'll just run through the criteria quickly. So, adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed project. So, we're only increasing, we're only adding 520 square feet of living space with this addition, and the, as, what was your name again? As Karen explained, you know, this is just, gives them enough room so they can have space to mix and mingle with friends and family. The, so, we meet the setback on the Easterly side, and the house is only seven feet from the property line. On the Wesley side, the addition is about 13 feet from the sideline, so we're doing our best to meet the sideline requirements. Compatibility of the size of proposed structure with neighboring properties, again, we have a third page that shows the houses in the immediate vicinity, the, which I think shows that we are compatible. And the increase in nonconformity, again, is increase in living space, and the new addition does not meet the Easterly setback. does not meet the easterly setback. Suitability of the site, again, this is a fairly level area. There is a wetland at the north end of the property, but it's almost 100 feet away. We don't believe that any runoff here is going to create a problem. Do we have drywells? Do we have drywells with this? So some water that lands on the roof is going to go to drywells. So we think that, you know, so we think the site is suitable. No concern about runoff. The impact of scale, size, and mass on neighborhood visual characters, basically, you really can't see the building from a street. The closest neighbor, which is the property to the south, where the house is only 6 feet away from this house. I mean, if you went to the backside of the McCredees, you can see that the stake marking the property line is about 5 inches from the back wall of their neighbor's house. Thankfully, they get along well with that neighbor. So the, but we're not having any impact on the neighborhood visual character. Certainly, there are no views or vistas in this location, and you can't see the house from the street. So we believe that there's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And if you want, I'll stop there.
That would be fine. Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, I will read the correspondences. There are three. First, as usual, Judith Giorgio, our health agent, writes on 8/20/2024. She reviewed the plan to renovate and add an addition to the property. The proposal will not add septic flow. No, it will encroach on the existing septic system. She has no concerns about the project. Next, we have a note from Terry Purbaugh and Christine Burns. They are abudders, and they--
They're the property to the south. They actually front on Scattery.
That's right. And they say that they wholeheartedly support the aforementioned application submitted to zoning. Anne and Scott have been their neighbors for almost nine years. We appear in the application as abudders to the south. There has never been an issue relative to the location of the existing dwelling in our property. On the contrary, they go out of their way to ensure that proximity doesn't ever become an issue. We support any recommendation the architect contractor should make in the placement of any mechanicals relative to its proximity to our property. If we were to describe and define the perfect neighbors, Anne and Scott would fit that definition. We again support the application and hope that their submission is viewed positively and grant your approval. Next, we have a note from Richard Wyler and Pamela. It looks like Wyler. It's handwritten, so. They say that the neighbors within the closest, they are the neighbors within the closest proximity to the proposed addition. They feel that it would have a minimal to zero impact on them, and they fully support the application. They've been kind neighbors, gracious neighbors, and even, and wave and even stated that they'll restrict construction to from 8 to 5 p.m. Monday through Friday. The proposal is appropriate for the neighborhood. That concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question about this application? Seeing none. Are there any questions from the board? Anybody at all? Don't be shy. Okay.
Yeah, but don't talk too long.
Ginny, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just have a, would there be openness to moving the generator? Or could it be moved to the back instead of where it's proposed?
Well, the, it could be. I discussed this with Anne this afternoon. The Purbaughs, who are the neighbors, have no objection to the location. We already have the AC units back there. And it's one of those things that, other than, you know, sort of the automatic trial that those things have, if they actually need it, the Purbaughs are going to love to hear the sound so they can come over and have lights and be warm. So we prefer to leave it as it is.
Just asking because, you know, the extent of the addition would create an opportunity to make a change like that, so.
Well, see, the problem is, you know, the, I mean, it's an R40 zone. You have to be set back 25 feet. So it's really, you know, unless they put it out in the middle of their yard, there's no way around the house that would satisfy it.
Let's see what David Clark asks us.
David Clark, for the record. I understand the concern, but the neighbor's garage is almost entirely the McCready's southerly property line. So you have the buffer of the neighbor's garage that separates any noise from the neighbor's house. So I can't see it being an issue.
Did he say that they're on their property line? Are you saying that their neighbor is actually on their property? Did I hear you right?
Is it pointed there? No? Yes. Let me get this. So that's the corner of the neighbor's garage.
Yep.
And the garage extends all the way to here.
Yep.
And then goes, so the garage, the neighbor's garage is right there. So it acts as a solid fence, better than a fence for noise.
And they already have some pieces over there as well, so otherwise it'd be all over the place.
The mechanicals.
Yeah, the mechanicals, that's what I meant to say. I'm tired. All right.
Oh, hold on one second. So Dave, you're also saying, though, the garage is right on the line.
Yeah.
So really, they, the, that neighbor hasn't, has no setback that they allow, right? So it's right on the line.
That garage has been there for--
Yeah. But essentially, there's no setback part, really, because the neighbor has their garage there, not because--
Yeah. And the noise is going to be, is probably going to be directed back to the McCready's house.
No, that's a good point. Thank you.
All right. If there's any other questions, please. No? Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations. Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed Acton votes yes.
And Ginny?
Yes.
All votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Dave Veach.
Nice project, certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and meets all of our criteria. I'll support it.
Very good. And Ed?
I have to say, I'm with Ginny on the generator. Whether the neighbors have a problem with it or not is really not the issue. The issue is it's a violation of our zoning bylaws.
It's not a violation. We already have an existing nonconformity with mechanicals in that area.
But you're adding a noncon, you're adding a mechanical to it.
That's correct.
You're adding something. So.
But it's not a--
That's my issue. There's certainly room to put it other places on the lot, too.
Where?
Your lot extends beyond the addition 76 feet.
So we can put it out in the middle of the yard. That sounds like a great idea, Ed.
All right, let's try to go easy on that, kind of. They're drinking my Kool-Aid about what the neighbors say isn't, you know, the end of the day here. But let's see, what else? Ginny? Deliberations, yes.
Yeah, no, I did have a concern about that, and, but I feel like Dave and Mr. Riley helped to explain why it's, I mean, could they move it? Yeah, but then wouldn't they be required to move it? I mean, they have room in the back, but they'd have to meet the new setback, so that would be the goal. So I don't know. I'm getting more comfortable with it.
Okay. Steve, deliberations?
Only 61 feet wide.
I think it's a nice project. I think that the addition blends into the house nicely. Kind of looks like it's been a part of it for a long time. As far as the generator's concerned, I'm not really concerned about it. There's air conditioning units there already that run longer periods of time than the generator probably would, so I don't see a problem with it. And the garage is right there to block any kind of noise that might go to the neighbor, so I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a nice project.
Yep, and Lee?
I agree. I think it's a great project. It's, once again, a really nice design, fits in perfectly with the existing house, and I think it's great, meets our criteria.
And Paul?
I agree with my colleague's explanation. It seems to me it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And I like the idea of keeping the mechanicals together, so despite whatever the neighbors say, I still like that idea. So I'm going to support it. And what are we going to do about the summer? Conditions?
I would assume you want your standard conditions on this?
Well, it's almost September anyway, so.
All right, I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 30 and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed Acton votes yes.
And Ginny?
Yes.
All votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous, again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
And motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Ed Acton votes yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Steve?
Steve votes yes.
Lee?
Yes.
All votes yes.
And as do I, and what time is it?
5:57 p.m.
Not bad. Good night, Chatham.
I said 6 o'clock.